I have to call a meeting to get order of the joint Mayor Selectment Facilities Group, Commission on Aging and Recreation Commission meeting. This is a first, I think it's important to have all these groups meet together. Number two on the item, gentlemen, is municipal projects. Now, there seems to be some kind of, let's start with, I'm trying to think which one's easier. Probably the aging commission on the armory would be the simplest, so that's one particular thing. Where do we stand with that, John at all?
The architect has all the approved floor plans, he's working on them now. They're going to have costing agreed, they said, Ellen, what, June?
Yes.
So, we'll have costing in June. And then after that, there's been a special committee forum that's going to present it to the people of Putnam. How was it put on?
Has the aging committee met with the facilities committee? Together as a joint meeting to say, okay, the facilities committee's in charge of buildings in Putnam and sites and so on. Has the aging committee met with those people to come together with a consensus of, this is-
Not one-on-one meetings. We've, you know, we've attended their meetings and Alan's attended many of our meetings as well. So, we're aware, each group's aware of what the others doing, so.
I hope everybody's aware of the cost factors here. Now, my predecessor, Los State Rep Rivera, made the buffalo squeak, they squeezed the nickel so hard. If all comes to pass, and let's just say, the people of Putnam approve everything for the age group. Let's say they approve the tech park. Let's say they approve tar field for the high school, I mean, the town hall and the library. Let's say they approve Saban Street. You're talking about twenty to twenty-five million dollars. When they see that nut, then forty years, and they see their mill, and I forgot the school, because the school goes on. Next year, that's a mill and a quarter, just the school. So, you're talking about, and we're gonna face almost a three mil increase this year. It, this is gonna be, and I had said it before, it's gonna be a hard fight. I was at a board of finance meeting, and they want me to champion their proposal of two point nine six mil increase. And I told them I would, but I said, it's gonna be a hard sell. That's this year. And remember, we ate the half a million dollars for the hospital tax. That was our revenue, which I think was a noble thing for us to do. But again, the taxpayers of Putnam are gonna eat that. So, I think all the plans are good. I think all the plans are worthwhile. However, do I sound like Doug Cutler now? We gotta worry about the cost here. So, that's that. Now, we'll go to the, the, and I still don't have, I've been asking for numbers for three years. What's this gonna cost? How much is that? I was first told that the armory would be one point five to maybe two million at the most. I talked to Mary today, and now with all the things that the aging committee wants, you're talking almost three million dollars. And so, it would be an ongoing thing. And who's gonna be in charge of that? How's it gonna work? I don't know. There are questions that we have to answer today, except for, I put in your package, I don't know if you all received it, the role of advisory committees. Can the aging committee, is it advisory committee as well as the facilities committee? And what the role is? And the bottom line stops here with these seven people when it comes to the money. And we're gonna have to go to the board of finance and beg and borrow and see what we can do. But it's a tough sell. Now, I'll, now, I'll get back to the aging committee in a minute. Saban Street, Tar Park. I think the state has been very gracious to us, and I think, and I wanna thank Willie Buskett for the hours he's put in going back and forth to state, seeing what they want. And we finally have some kind of consensus what the fields are. Owned with the field selection committee, the facilities committee, Alan, it's gonna be here. What's it gonna cost? How's it gonna be? Who's the architect? I made a decision. When Cutler died, we had four different people bidding on everything. Rivera Provost, J and D, Messier, and there's another one. So, I made an executive decision to have one person do it all, and that was J and D. She was forthright, she was inexpensive, she had engineers on call, and she consolidated everything. The expediate matters. She gave us some good prices. Now, that ruffled a few feathers, but I don't care. Because you have to have some kind of decision, and that was the decision I made. She's been upfront and forthright with giving the board of selectmen numerous reports on where she's going, what she's did, what she projects. And her prices are reasonable. Now, there's a parcel called the Woodstock parcel that was not involved in this, because the state's gonna look at that and say, leave it alone, leave it in natural habitat. Don't mess with that. Then I asked Mary, what if there's not enough gravel to pay for the fields? What's plan B? Does the facilities group have a plan B? Some think the facilities group wanna take the gravel out of the Woodstock area. Not Woodstock, Connecticut, the piece on Woodstock Avenue there. If you do that, the state may front on that, and that may hold up Saban Street. So, there's a lot of things that have to be answered. Where, where do we wanna go? Where's the emphasis? Where's the money? Scott doesn't have one question, I thought he'd have thirty by now.
No, my only, my only concern, and I've been, I didn't go to every facilities meeting, but I went to a lot, is I don't think we have a solid number yet. In other words, we're waiting for the architects to come back with the, with the armory, and we're waiting for an architect to come back with the, with the town hall library complex. And I know the facilities committee, you know, a lot of the discussion, we've had it as a board of selectmen, have been talking about the trade-off of selling the gravel and the minerals in the, in the trees for putting in the fields. So, I, I don't want the number to get out there yet, because we don't have a number. I mean, it, you know, we might, we might be south of that. I, I'm kinda optimistic that we're gonna be south of that. But, you know, we'll find out in June, I guess, when the, when the architect comes back, so. That's only my thoughts.
He's coming back in, in June for just the armory, or both?
From what, what I heard at the both meetings, is he's supposed to have costing numbers for both, both projects. And I think that, the, the other piece of the equation that we've been talking about in the board of selectmen for a long time is to actually find out what type of gravel is there and the actual estimated value of it. There was a lot of debate, that there had been test borings done in the past, but we wanna actually dig a hole and have the potential bidders come out and look to do an evaluation. So, I think we gotta get all of the, all of the numbers to, to finally come up with a, with a total bottom line number.
What do you have, Mary?
And I think after last night's, last week's facilities study group meeting, they approved to move forward with J and D to cost out what Saban Street's development is gonna be. One of the things I'm hoping to garner out of this group meeting is, in the, you know, I realize I'm coming at the eleventh hour on all of these things. And what I'm gauging from listening to the vendors is that they're not exactly entirely sure who they're supposed to be taking direction from in order to implement the right thing, items in the plan. So, is the, is the field layout and design supposed to be coming from the facility study group? Or coming from the recreation department? Or is the layout for the armory supposed to be the commission on aging, or the facility study group, or the rec department? Like, who, because sometimes there's some conflict in that. And I think that's, and, you know, we're kinda culminating to the very end. And everybody, you know, everybody's been invested in this for so long, that everybody wants to see this to the finish line. And I think that's, one of the things I hope we can garner out of this is, or, and maybe I just need the clarification as to who gives those determinations, and how do we communicate that to the vendors? So, the vendors are confident in what information that they're gonna be getting and putting together. Because let's face it, we only want them to have to, to work the numbers once, and not have to come back and find out that, oh, but this group wanted something else. So, I mean, that's kind of one of the things, I mean, especially like with, you know, the fields and, you know, different layouts and stuff like that.
Alan.
Yes, communication has definitely gone awry here. The, since Doug's passing, I think things have, things have changed in, let's just say, our committee's relationship with Doug as far as what was going on. He had a pretty good handle on what we were doing. He was asking us to do things that might have been above the charge that, that the resolution calls for, for what our committee's charge was. But he did, in fact, you did at one time, go with, with us to the board of finance to get money appropriated to hire engineers for two, and architects. So, when you hire engineers and you have to pay them, then it seems like you have to coordinate with them somehow to make sure that they're doing what's being asked of them. As far as the other committees that, that what Mary's talking about, is, it's up to, I think whoever's paying that or approving the bills for those two, whether it's the architects or the engineers, it's up to them to coordinate with recreation and with commission on aging, and the library, and Aspenok to make sure that everybody's been, you know, on the same page. And as far as, yes, we haven't had formal meetings with committee on aging, for example, but I didn't think it was necessary. Most of the committee comes to every one of the meetings. And in fact, last meeting, the architect was here, and before the architect left, our committee asked if there was any questions of them, that, of the architects before they left. So, I think that the line of communication is there as far as how it's, how it's spelled out and understood by the board of selectmen. I don't know, it seemed to be very well defined when, when Doug was alive. In fact, he had us doing some other things. One thing that was asked of me before, slightly before he passed away, was he was, he was asking me to attend the meeting. He was in the process of negotiating this possible sale of the old library in case that we, the referendum passed, that he was just working ahead. So, those are the kind of things that were going on in the background. But at any rate, this is what's, you know, you've had to jump in and try to fill the void, Tony, and we helped out. Now, all of a sudden, Mary's there, and she needs to get up to speed, and that's a good question she asked about who's, you know, who's steering the boat.
Well, I think the, as I said before, I think the final buck stops right up here at the board of selectmen. And I think it's up to the facilities committee to say, this is our recommendation, which I haven't, I haven't seen that. The aging committee, this is our recommendation.
Yeah. Are you talking formal and writing proposals?
Something in writing, yeah. Normie?
In regards to some of that, we've met with the aging, with the architect. The aging and recreation concerning the armory, they were the ones who were instrumental in laying out that footprint. Wasn't necessarily us, being the facilities committee. Several meetings have, have gone with the architect. They made their recommendations, he'd come back, presented a new floor plan. They were the ones that were satisfied with. They're probably like ninety-eight percent complete. The last meeting, I think he's got a few more tweaks he's gotta build before he's a hundred percent with. Their satisfaction.
But the, the aging commission doesn't have the authority, because it's, it's not their building. It goes under the facilities as a building.
Well, until we get this all wrapped up, and like Scott said, until we get some numbers, what do we have to present to the board of selectmen?
Basically, nothing. But when you say, you have a conceptual design, the aging committee has a conceptual design. And when you made that design, are there any cost factors? You just, you know, I want a Cadillac. Can't afford a Cadillac. It's like a leased Volkswagen, you know? So, you have to be an idea what these things are gonna cost. I went with Willie and John to, to Patchit, and we talked to the lady about the kitchen. It's a nice kitchen. Do they, do, do we need a commercial kitchen down here? I mean, they're an established group, and maybe twenty-two to twenty-eight people eat there for lunch. And the lunches are brought in, they just warm it up.
It's cheaper than putting it in later. And just-
Norm?
We agree. We talked, that is the Cadillac the plans. You have to put in everything with, with what you think. And once we get that number established, a ballpark number, then you say, ball, this is way out of our ballpark. Now, we're gonna stop making cutbacks, and we have to start addressing it appropriately.
Okay. I, I know that the board of finance is the watchdog, everybody's pocketbook, I did that for many years. But we have to recommend to the board of finance. And I don't wanna go over there, face those guys and say, yo, add another two mils to the tax rolls, add another three mils to the tax rolls. Yes, Al?
When we went in front of them for, to get the money for the architect, we did explain to them at that time how big a project this is. This is a hundred-year project, you know, once in a hundred years. And for us, it's like the perfect time, meaning we still have the ads landfill money coming in. We, our schools will be set for a lot of years after the high school is finished. So, that, the idea of having these projects, yes, they're big projects, but they're all tied together. And it's something that we can leave to our children and grandchildren, and they won't have to worry about it. Look at how, how great we're gonna be as far as set up going in the future. Look at the surrounding towns and what we have for a tax structure, especially adding the tech park now. We're gonna be in, in great shape. And hopefully, by this, these three projects, pretty much having something for everyone in town that, yes, they might have to dig deep for a couple of years, but the idea of having this, these three projects at once, it's gonna put Putnam in a great position for many, many years.
I'm not gonna argue that point. I think we need what we need. I mean, to me, this building is fine for, for what it's doing. And you put good money into an old building. We need a new roof, that's five hundred thousand dollars. Took it out of the budget, because things are, things are tough. I just don't want, like, bickering. Is the, is the facilities committee in charge of the field design? No, that's the field committee. That's Willie and the recreation director and the recreation department to design the fields that the kids are gonna play on. That's their charge. Your charge is to say, here's the field, here's what we want, here's what we have, and that's the bottom line. The engineers say, okay, we'll take the gravel out and do the softball field, because we lost the softball field, it's our field. That's the way it was supposed to be designed. And hopefully, that'll, that'll happen. And then you have to make a recommendation. Saban Street entrance, over the bridge entrance? Where's the parking lot gonna be? Where's the drainage? How's it gonna work to the river? We gotta make a fifty-foot buffer? There's a lot of variables in there that, and I think can cost extra money down the end. I don't wanna touch, personally do not wanna touch the property on Woodstock Avenue, because the state will jam on work at Saban Street if you mess with that. They said, leave it in its natural habitat state. For those of you who are old enough to remember the bridge to go to the YMCA a couple of years ago, don't you remember the battle we had with the wood turtles and the three frog, whatever the hell that creature was? We gotta worry about those people, and, and it took forever to relocate those things. So, if they want a natural habitat on Woodstock Avenue, let it be. Don't screw up what, something that's very good that you worked hard to get. Ally, Kat?
Yes, I think that you can look at Woodstock Avenue and separate it enough whereby it still can be part of the project if you go to the state now and ask for it to be included. And if down the road, they say no, then you can drop it out. But right now, we have the engineers, basically, the original engineers, and they have all the CAD, CAD notice for, for Woodstock Avenue available. We have them on the book.
Oh, John's in an opera right now.
He's to go on.
I like that. I like whatever that is.
I know you were here, so.
And I think you're right, Ally, but I think maybe to, to avoid that, we should have stayed upfront. Can we include this? They say no right off the get-go, why do we have to tinker with that?
Well, we might, we might also be able to give them some land. We had, Doug had some land that was gonna be donated to the town. Maybe we could give them that land to help, help this whole thing. That pro, that piece of property over there, so close in proximity to the other, that the idea of doing the regrading, because there isn't, it used to be a gravel bank that was abandoned and never finished. The topsoil's gone, it's not usable to the town, it's just a piece of, piece of property. So, that if you were able to take the gravel out of there, it's gonna help pay for the bridge, which if you take the bridge out of the revenue for the gravel, I guess, we don't know what the revenue is, because we have the dug holes. But what we project as revenue, if we take the bridge, money out of there for, for an engineer bridge, then that probably isn't enough to do what we need to do with the recreation complex. So, that's the reason to look at. Those, the two reasons are, we can bring topsoil that's left over from Saban Street over to Woodstock Avenue, reclaim the thing properly, seed it, make it usable, whether it's used for, go over there and go walking around it, or whatever. But at least it will be a piece of property that is still, that still would be open space, but it would be something that people of town could use. A little footbridge, you can walk to the other, the other complex, you can tie it into the river trail that's already down.
But we have to build another bridge to get to it?
No, that, the access to that is off Woodstock Avenue.
All right, but to get from that property, to get to the Saban Street athletic fields, you would need a bridge, another bridge.
Just a little footbridge.
And when the state says, no, we don't want just a little footbridge, we want you to go by these specifications, because the John Q. Publics have walked across this, and your town's liable. So, we have to go with their specifications, I would think. Maybe I'm wrong, I don't know. That's from an old meetup teacher.
I'm not sure that's quite the issue with, of, I've mentioned, talking about passive vehicles and school buses, surprise.
Tony.
Yes, Derek?
Since Mary's been here now for a couple of months and is getting settled and up to speed on all this stuff, and since she acting through you is sort of the, the staff representative of the board of selectmen, is there a reason not to have Mary be the point person on all this?
She should be.
Okay.
She is, basically, yeah.
Okay, so rather than worry about, is it facilities who talks to them, or rec, or whoever? They all talk to her.
Everything should go through Mary.
Yeah.
And then Mary brings it before this, this camp up.
Right, and then she directs the architects based on what, okay, that makes sense to me.
And what, one of the components that I, I don't wanna say struggled with, but that hasn't been necessarily overly clear, is, and I think other staff that in between time when after Doug passed, and was, who do you, who is the decision maker? So, each of these are advisory commissions. And one may have one viewpoint on something, and one may have a different viewpoint. So, what direction do you give? So, which, which one is the overarching, or is there an overarching one that then delineates that, okay, because it came from facility study, then that, that is, that is the hard and fast that's going? You know what I mean? And, you know, part of it is me trying to get up to speed on all of these and the relationships, and also trying to mend the communication fence, fences that kinda got deteriorated during that chaotic period. But I agree, I think, and I've been trying to get that where all requests and all instruction to the architects or the engineers come through me, so that way it's one point as opposed to multiple different points. But it's then which group you report back to and is then charged with-
The next step.
Right, right. So, and I think that, I'm hoping that we've, we've gotten to a place where, as far as the architects and the engineers are concerned, that the facility study group is kinda the overarching monitor, if you will, of the tasks under that. But it would have to be within collaboration with the recreation department. And I don't know how much collaboration has occurred necessarily between like recreation and the facility study group. I know there's been more with the commission on aging, but I'm, you know, but.
All right, so I have a, for, for instance, question. Like I say, I haven't been to all the facilities meetings, but I've been to a lot of them. And I was, I don't even know when it was, a month or so ago. So, I'm sitting over there in my normal seat, and I see them, J and D unveil the new field plan, okay? And Doug and Alma and, and those guys hadn't seen that before.
Right.
And like the example that every meeting that I've been to with the facilities, they were talking about coming in through the, through the elementary school. In fact, I, I remember in the early days of the beginning meetings, residents of Saban Street were upset about having extra traffic coming in there, and they said, no, no, this is gonna come in through the elementary school. And then all of a sudden, I saw the, the new plan. So, an example like that. Who, where's it going? Who wins? You know, where's the traffic gonna go? And, and, I mean, that's a, that's a huge deal. If I lived on Saban Street, I'd ache my ears out, you know? So, I mean, there's an example of where, you know, a decision that kinda has to be made in who's in charge, and, you know, that's a key piece of the puzzle.
Right, and I felt in that situation, I know that J and D had not been brought to the facility study group prior to that. So, that's why we were trying to, I was trying to get them back into that cycle. And it was the, you know, showing of the conceptual plan, and I kinda felt bad for J and D, because they had been tasked with, you know, they had been tasked with this, with, you know, the rec commission had reviewed that plan, correct, Owen?
Just before.
Just before. You guys had kind of seen it, thought it was a good-
Well, we saw the other ones before that Messier had too, but Messier was going too close to the water. He had an extra field, and it was just a pure, nothing was right most of the time, you know? He had different fields, different places, and finally, it came right, then he passed away. And we didn't have anybody to do anything for us. I think as far as the facilities, I think Alan's done a heck of a job with the town hall and the library, and, and I wish him luck doing the armory. Let him handle that, let him take care of that. And let the rec commission, or the, or the, or the commission, field committee, take care of that. We just, the rec commission just went over that plan downstairs. Another thing that was brought up was none of them thought running through the parking lot at the grammar school to get to the bridge was not good. Because anytime before three o'clock in the afternoon, you can't even hardly get into that parking lot. So, anybody that wanna go across couldn't go across unless you had another entryway. So, the rec commission just decided they would like to have two entrances. The main one off Saban, and a secondary where we're gonna build a bridge to take the gravel out or whatever, to have two in and outs. So, it just relieved the pressure.
Alan?
Yes, that, that whole, that whole plan, we talked about that ahead of time, and we weren't, there was no truck traffic gonna go through the elementary parking lot. It was all gonna go behind, going down the, Willie was-
That's not the, that's not the question. Question is-
No, it wasn't the, it's not the-
Question is, is it truck use? That's when you have the facility active.
My problem has been, we, we know we want a bridge to have the gravel go up, but nobody knows if it's ten, ten cents or ten million. We don't know what it is. We can't spend a lot of money on that bridge. Bridge to nowhere. We gotta know what it's gonna cost us. And nobody has said a word about that. You know, Alan, if you know what it's gonna cost, it makes a big difference, you know? I don't, I don't know.
J and D is now gonna be costing that. They've gotten, you know, the charge to cost that.
But it's a two-lane or one-lane?
It's, they're costing a two-lane with a pedestrian crossing as the main entrance, because that was the feedback from the facility study group, was that they wanted the main entrance at, at the bridge, and having the Saban Street entrance only be for emergency exit or emergency vehicles, correct?
That's what we originally wanted it for.
Right, and so that's how J and D is moving forward. They're kinda slightly changing that plan. It's just trying to make sure that all the- Um, it's just trying to make sure that all the groups are on that same page.
I don't think we are now, because I think we just changed it again.
And that, that was explained at the rec commission meeting, but the rec commission didn't see that as the, as the way to go. Am I correct Owen?
Yeah.
So what Mary, what you said was explained to them.
Okay.
See, that, that's where the, this is where the communication has been the weakest, is between recreation and the facilities. And I think that's going forward, that's probably where things need to get fixed. As far as the, the fields committee is concerned, I, I got a couple of representatives for some of the U fire relations, but that's, that's what I do. And the representatives from WPTP and Nikon and now need to meet about, just to go over what's going on.
Well, let me, let me interject. When Bob Messia was alive, we tried to have numerous field committee meetings, and then those representatives showed up. Norman was on that, I, I don't think Norman came once to a field committee meeting, maybe once, okay? Early on, the field committee, you were.
I was on a field committee?
Yeah. As, as one of the facilities.
Did you tell me?
Uh-huh, I'm telling you, you were on it, and you were notified to come to meetings. Don't, we, we, all we had was the people on the rec commission, myself, Owen, Steve Fosher, and Jeff Morissette would show up at the meetings. So when that meeting ended, and we would, we'd go to a field committee meeting, and Alan, and you were there, Alan.
And wait, really excuse me, but as many times I see you in the town hall, have you ever told me I missed a meeting?
Yes, I did, but so I, I, this is way back from long, we're talking, we're talking a year and change ago. You know, I'm not, I'm not trying to argue with you.
This is where the communication is, is gonna ride because.
Let's trade an hour right now.
Right, I mean, we need, we need to have maybe joint meetings of recreation in, in the facilities, because that whole idea of there being a problem with, with access, that first, first I ever heard of it.
Well, we just, tonight, Vitaly brought it up, said, you're gonna have trouble going through that school parking lot, because if you go up there with the way they're parked, he said you'd be lucky to get two vehicles through there and that's it. To go to a game.
Somebody, somebody developed a plan that showed going out Saban Street. So that, some forethought must have went into this before Dave Vitaly's forethought. I mean, because that plan, some, J and D spent some time putting that plan together. And, you know, that's.
I know they did.
There's some questions I know, you know, that, facilities would have about, about that. I mean, as far as the gravel removal part of it is concerned, I think we can do a lot better job watching over that than even J and D can.
Yeah, well, I'm not talking about the gravel, I'm talking about, you know.
Yeah, but putting the fields in there afterwards, it's just, you know, it's like, okay, you gotta do it right, but it's. You gotta get the thing.
Location of the parking lot is critical.
Right, but you gotta get the whole thing degraded first before you do anything.
Yeah.
And that, and that's very important in how that, how we attack that. And in laying out the fields based upon what happens there. And it, to not have any communication between those two committees is, is just simple.
But do you think that the recreation commission tried not to have communication?
Well, I don't know, I think it was.
We, we would meet, we would meet, and, and I'm gonna be quite honest with you. I was asked, as Tony said, said to the group, I was asked to go on a fact-finding mission to see what Doug had been doing with, with materials and where, where he was at. I had, I did that fact-finding mission, I reported to the selectmen a couple times in executive session, and, and we had meetings about it, uh, with, with a number of selectmen's. Doug Cutler Jr. and Alma were at, were at briefing, and we talked about things that we were finding, uh, at, out through this fact-finding. Because we couldn't figure out even how things were gonna be being paid, or if there were appropriations to pay things. We did that fact-finding, it was reported, then we began the planning. We met with the state, talked to the state about what, what could we do? That was formulated with, with, with myself and J and D as our representative, with the state. We did, we did the formulating. We had to, for some of this, because we were talking about gravel removal, Alan had to be not in, in the loop, because of, of their, their potential conflict of interest. So he couldn't be in the loop. So I couldn't, we, we couldn't, correct me if I'm wrong, others that I've spoken with, we couldn't allow him to know what was going on with certain gravel opportunities that we were pursuing. And so when we, we went that route, and we got to figuring that out, it was reported to the selectmen in executive session, and, and likewise, we have now started to do some of the planning phase. And, and what happened was, there was a tremendous gap. From Bob Messia passing away to that fact-finding ending was almost, uh, three-quarters of a year that that took place. And so when, when the facts were all, uh, were all determined, and where we were at with the financing, we went to the board of finance, and we, we, there was the, and Alan was with me, we, we got the funding for the architect, because we needed to do that. And then, and then we went about with, with some planning. So, for the fields, and the rec commission just recently has seen what, what has transpired in the last few months. So they didn't have anything that they were seeing before that. So it doesn't, it wasn't like six months ago, this, this plan to exit on Saban Street was, was unveiled to the rec commission. This is just recently where J and D has made this proposal after sorting out some of Bob Messia's plans. And the rec commission has said that they, they are, they were in favor of the suggestion that J and D made, and that's, that's how it, that's how it transpired.
Yep.
Yes, thanks Tony. As someone who sits both on the Board of Selectmen and on the Facility Study Committee, and I've been on that committee since it was started back up, I think that goes back to two thousand and eleven, I guess. That committee has overseen pretty much anything to do with any of these projects, because obviously there wasn't a fields committee back then, because we hadn't been that, we hadn't gotten that far along in the project. There wasn't even a Commission on Aging at that time, so the Facility Study Committee really did drive that truck. And Willie, I agree with almost everything that you've said here, almost everything, it's been spot-on. Um, after Doug died, you reported to this board in executive session, obviously in executive session, you can't really say what goes on in an executive session. But you're right, you did report back to us about your fact-finding, about reaching, about pressing rewind, because when Doug died, everything's in disarray. Nobody knows what Doug was working on, nobody knows what was going on in that office. So we've gotta find out, okay, what was he working on, who was he talking to, what did he do, where's all the information? And Tony, I believe you tasked Willie with taking care of all of that.
Yes, I did.
And Willie did report back to us. But then, as soon as all that reporting on fact-finding was done, which I think was laudable, very good thing to do, then the information dried up, and again, when I put my facility study hat on, we're still working on all this stuff. And months later, I don't know, six, eight, nine months later, we're presented a plan to the facility study group that changed everything that we had already been working on in terms of Saban Street. So we're like, how did this happen? We've been working all along on it, and paying bills, yes, Owen, we have.
A couple bills you paid, but you haven't been working on the design. Messier did the design, showed it to rec commission a couple times before he passed away. You know, and then they made changes, and they came back, and they were wrong, so they went back, then he, then he died.
Owen.
You, you guys haven't been up there working on it. The fields are, are a end result of this stuff. It's not building the town hall or, or the library or doing the armory. It's gonna be the last thing we're gonna build. So I don't, we oughta decide now what we're gonna do to correct it and go on.
Likewise, just because the rec commission said their feelings tonight, doesn't mean anything is going to happen. All they did was state their feelings, just as the facilities committee has their feelings. So now it's at a point where we will, we, we should have a conversation. I agree, I, I'm not disagreeing with what you're saying. I, and if planning happened, and some of the planning didn't get jointly shared, okay? Then I'll take responsibility for that, but I also wanna say that it's still a work in progress, and we, we need to progress towards it, because I'm in a hundred percent favor of this project. So I'm not here stymying the project, neither is the rec commission, and I don't think, and neither is the facilities committee. And I, Norm, I'm frustrated too, I apologize, but I'm just, back in two thousand and eleven, we did start, and that's five years ago, we did start a facilities committee, and Bob Messia did come once you hired him, and, uh, and came, and, and we did have some joint discussion, but that, that, that is history, that is done. Now we need to move forward, I think. I think we need to move forward and find answers.
Thanks Tony. Willie, I think everything you've done is good, okay? In, in terms of, you're trying to take the bull by the horns, I don't have a problem with, with what you're doing, okay? You've been tasked by your boss to do things and you're doing it, good job. All I'm getting at is, the facility study group has been the conduit, it's been the vehicle to make all this stuff happen. And things started happening, and no one said anything to us as a committee. We didn't even get bills until after the work was already done. Contracts were signed to do certain work that we didn't know about. And all that work was taking place, and I'm not going back two years, I'm talking about within the last eight or nine months. And, and then we were given the bills after the fact, saying, oh, this work was done, you need to approve them, but by the way, you probably don't have purview over this. So at the last meeting, I know Mary you were there, Alma you were there, Alan, Norm, I, I asked two questions, I said, are there people here that, that don't believe that the facility study group had the purview over the fields? And I'm sure that there were people at that meeting that felt that way. People in an official capacity, that's fine. But why are you giving us the bills now to pay them? And then I asked if we say, this bill has nothing to do with us, because you've told us that we don't have purview over this, so why don't you send the bill to someone else and have them approve it? No, we have to approve it, well, what if we don't approve it? It gets paid anyway. It, it was just a, it's a huge mess.
It's true, and that's, and we, and I'm the one that said that. Whether it was the facilities committee that did it, because it came out of some of their funds, am I not correct, Mary? So that's why the facilities committee was asked about that. The town asked for a job to be done, whether it was the mayor or somebody else that asked for that to be done. It came out of the coffers of the facilities committee, that's how, that's what happened. So if the facilities committee didn't wanna approve it, they didn't have to. But it, it was something that was ordered by the town to be done, and the bill was gonna have to be paid.
Alan, Mary?
I think we just need to fix this, and the way to fix it going forward, whenever the engineers here, the engineer to do with Saban Street, which is, J and D needs to be sitting with both, the recreation commission and the commission on aging. The idea of a joint commission, joint committee meeting at this time makes the most sense, because the project is, is aspects of the project that should be handled by recreation, and aspects of the project that should be handled by the facilities. Facilities committee should take this project to zoning and wetlands with J and D to explain it. And we should also, we're already talking about forming, and this is probably the most important committee we haven't even talked about yet, is our committee that Denise and I have been working on to try to get a public relations committee, to try to get some people representing each one of, besides our Aspernau, each one of these groups that are here tonight. To be able to go out and make the public aware, you talk about getting a vote, and being able to afford this project. That's, that's the way to do it, is to have all of us, who, a lot of us, and that, my compliments again to whoever formed this committee, we have a lot of people, and a lot of these committees are all people that have been native to Putney their whole life, and they'd like to see these projects carried forward for, for their children and grandchildren. And this is a great way to go out and go to the First Friday, or to the car show, or whatever, to show what we wanna do, and hopefully get some support for it. And this is why I think that committee going forward is gonna be probably the most important committee, at least at that time.
And before Mary, she had eleven floor, Mary's been here over two months, and Mary's background, as you know, and as this Board of Selectmen know, and the Board of Finance, her background is on finance, and she worked many, many years as Achilles' thing. She's got a very good handle on what's going on. Mary and I talk every single day about these projects, and I really respect her opinion and the way she's going. She's not Doug Cutler, there was only one Doug Cutler. She's Mary, and she's gonna do things what she thinks is the right way to do things. I think she has the backing of this board, she certainly has the backing of the Board of Finance, and I think we have to forget what happened in the past, and let's look to the future. Alan, did you read the book The Tale of Two Cities?
Yes, I'm getting it all down.
I can see that. I'm just checking, they put the names in there. Mary, you got it.
Um, I just was gonna sideway off what Alma was saying. Part of the reason why, um, the invoices that the facility study group received was just trying to rebuild that communication. So I recognize that we can't go back and turn back time and change who was tasked with and who authorized what, but it was trying to reestablish that communication line and recognize that those invoices were being paid out of the source of funds that they had been delegated to oversee. Um, and so it was just trying to reestablish that. And I really just wanna be able to look at, here we are now, and how do we move forward? How do we reestablish that communication with the, with the Board of Rec and get everyone back on that same page? And how do we bring this to the, to the final end of getting those cost numbers, which are gonna be very important, and we're in a very short timeline at this point, to achieve that? And so I wanna have very clear, um, very clear, um, instructions to our architects and our engineers on building those cost estimates. So one of the things is the, you know, the bridge is a, that's a very big cost factor. And one of the things that I have requested J and D to do was, aside from cost a two-lane bridge with a, with a pedestrian, get a roundabout idea of what a one-lane, single, you know, and maybe we, that's part of the conversation later on, but at least we may have some ideas, so we're not having to wait another month or something to get additional estimates. If we decide the first round is, is too high, we can still come back and have some reasonable conversation with that. But I just wanna be able to move forward, and I think that's been a, a hard thing as everybody gets their feet back under them, on understanding, you, nobody had seen that Saban Street rendition until a month ago. Um, it was a initial conceptual design, and I understand shocking to many, um, but it was just that, a conceptual design. You know, it wasn't a hard concrete, hard and fast plant, it was a conceptual design, so.
We're gonna have to, uh, when we get the numbers for the town hall and the library, and we get the numbers for the armory on Saban Street. I just wanna read one sentence here on the, uh, charge of the facilities committee. The committee may assist in the development of feasibility studies and use studies of buildings and building projects, which are part of the town's capital improvement plan. Now, in the budget, we have the five-year capital improvement. I've never seen an estimate in there, this year's budget, or all the bites here after, or before, that have money for capital improvement for Saban Street, library, town hall. And I think, once we get these numbers, we're gonna have to put them in the budget as our duty, so that the people, when they get their budget thing for next year, they'll see, they'll have a pretty good feel, and how are you gonna pay for this, and you know, thirty years, forty years, USDA, whatever the heck we're gonna do. And that's the first time I really realized that was in the charge, that it has to be in the town's, uh, improvement plan. So that's something to consider, because it's gonna be a lot of money. Yes, Scott?
I have one other question that, in terms of getting this project, you know, moving forward. The one thing that we've been talking about as a Board of Selectmen is to find out what that gravel's worth. And where are we on that, in terms of, we talked about digging home and inviting bidders, or where, where are we on that?
So as part of the cost estimations that, um, J and D is gonna be putting together, they're also gonna be doing gravel estimations. There was a fair amount of. There was a fair amount of test pits that were done during the sampling of when the high school, when they were at the high school. So some of it is gonna be based on that. Yes, she has definitely, and she will say in that, that it's only gonna be an estimation, and that when we get ready to do an RFP, we should do additional test pits for s- bidders, potential bidders to actually review and, and look at, but, um, we, you know, without having bidders there, it wouldn't necessarily make sense to go in and do test pits again. It's gonna basically show the same basic materials that are, were in there a few years back. I mean, it's, the land hasn't been disturbed in that time period. So, um, that would be the part of the, you know, recommendation in the co- in all, the overall cost, because you would have to get through the bidding process. So there would be costs to bring somebody in, to be able to do those test pits.
Yes, Alan?
The, uh, Mary's right, it should be done when you decide how you're gonna handle the project, but it kinda needs to be done yesterday, because this is the key to everything. If you can't do this project because there isn't enough gravel to, to do the project, then, you know, it's like dominoes, the rest of them all fall, because you, you need this to do the others, and, uh, you really need to establish that. And the other, the other thing that, just so everybody knows what facilities committee's conversation with, with Doug Cutler was, was that whatever, whoever ended up doing the gravel, there was gonna be a long list of stipulations, and we went over that with him, those stipulations. And the stipulations were that the engineer would make close the gun and watch over the grades there, so that when that contract had finished, they were gonna be held to, um, putting in the appropriate grass seed, the thing would be graded properly, otherwise their humongous performance bond would not be returned to them. So that, if we go the, any other way, in other words, take the money into the gravel, and I go out to bid, we'll never, ever get this project funded, because it'll turn into somebody else's profit. Because when somebody goes in there and has to do reclamation, that's required by the zoning commission, it's part of the zoning regulations. So what's, all we're doing is holding them to a, a higher standard, meaning that they have to create parking lots here, and they create fields over here. It's, all we have to do is specify the, the seed, work with them as far as the irrigation is concerned, the electrical. It all can be done with the contractor, as long as it's stipulated when the agreement is made originally. And again, that, whoever it is, must, must witness those polls, because what some people consider as gravel is not what other people consider gravel.
And you have that performance bond that you're holding over there.
Oh, that thing is, is huge.
George?
Just, just one person's opinion, I'm part of the minority, but, um, as far as the, the, the part thing goes, the Saban Street thing goes, I really think that should be a recreation committee, uh, task. I mean, I joined the facilities committee to work on the town hall and the library, then now we're working on the community center, but the fields, it just seems to me that that's really, I don't think that really should be our task, personally, just one man's opinion. And my other opinion is, I'm hoping that J and D's gonna come up with a hard number on, uh, cost of doing the fields, because when we, when we look at what the gravel, uh, amount is, whether it's a million dollars or a million and a half, at some point we need a hard number to know what it's gonna cost to actually build these, you know, the lights, the irrigation. I mean, those numbers have to be known.
No question. All right, this meeting's gonna end in about four minutes. Does anybody else, any selectmen have any questions?
I'm just wondering, I mean, we've been talking about test pits. Yeah, thank you, Tony. We've been talking about digging test pits for somewhere around a year. How didn't, if test pits were dug a few years ago, how come that never came up until now?
Twenty years ago.
Twenty years ago?
Oh, not just a few years ago, it was quite a while ago.
So the, she's, J and D's gonna coordinate this, to dig that pit?
Okay, that's not quite as bad.
Send out the bid, those who wanna bid can come and watch them dig holes?
That will be, they're gonna give us a cost estimate, and it will be part of the cost estimate to, that will tell, you know, how much it's actually gonna cost to, you know, negotiate through and build an RFP, as well as what they think the results of those RFPs would be, with an estimate for revenue. So we know the full cost of what it would be for those fields to be put in, and then we can have an estimation of what they believe the gravel might be worth in it, so we can offset that, so we can look at total dollars.
And just to go on with George's, I believe the facilities committee did their job in finding Saban Street as the site, and I believe they should turn the design of the fields to the recreation commission, 'cause that's recreation. Another one man's opinion. Yes, Linda?
Hello, can I ask just one question about?
Could I ask, yes, your time.
Um, the Woodstock Avenue thing, some of the members of the facilities committee were a little surprised, including myself, to hear about this natural habitat thing. We had heard that we couldn't do the solar thing on there, and that was the extent of what we heard, but that-
That's why they didn't wanna put the solar there, because the state said, leave it alone, leave it just the way it is.
Well, there's a difference between you can't go solar on it, and you, and you can't do anything. So I would just ask that that be clarified with the state, because-
As, as Roy Simmons once told me, write to the state anyhow, and I don't wanna see a paper, no. So I want the state to say to us in writing, you can't do anything on this piece of property, leave it as a natural habitat, and continue with Saban Street fields.
Right, I mean, is that what, maybe you have that information?
I know, I, I'm saying, I want somebody that's from the state, the DEP, to tell us that.
I believe that mostly came through a conversation, again, I wasn't at the conversation, um, but in the information gathering process here, um, there, the DEEP had had a long meeting and conversation with, um, J and D, and Willie, and some of the other, um, I think Messier might have been part of that. Anyway, um, and they, they expressed significant concern over additionally developing Woodstock Avenue. Um, and so, they don't, I don't think that it was ever put in writing at the time. Um, I had J and D going back through their information to see if they had something in writing from the state, but we could clarify the point.
I'm just saying, it would be shame not to get the gravel from there, just because we think we can't. If you know we can't, then that's, that's one of the-
I think DEEP's concern is that they wanna make sure that it's actually for recreation purposes and not for graveling purposes.
It could not be for-
So, we're gonna, we're gonna be using, the need for using Woodstock Avenue is really for recreation purposes, rather than just to obtain the gravel out of it. I think that was their expressed concern, but again, we can, we can contact DEEP and have them just reiterate whatever it was their concerns were, and have them formulate them for us in a more formal fashion.
Alan?
We, we, we'd love to be able to talk to DEEP about what we wanted to do over there, and what, and what Linda's actually talking about here, because I think if they understand what we're trying to do, that thing is gonna be open space, just like it is now. It's just, and you mentioned that regrading, on the day we talked about it, regrading is all it is. The place is a mess over there. Willie and I walked the knee cable market, you gotta get a munking book to wash it.
No, I'll, I'll let them decide. I don't want, I don't wanna jeopardize them. What do you got, hot flash, Scott?
A little bit, a little bit.
He stands below my three here. I wanna cut this, uh, short, because it's now seven o'clock, and I wanna thank the, those people from the agent committee, those people from the facilities committee that come. Uh, maybe we got something accomplished. I hope we got something accomplished. Don't be running out of here, Willie. I saw you in the starting position.
Motion to adjourn, yeah.
Motion to adjourn has been made from this joint committee?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Both? Eyes happy. The joint commission meeting is over for this, at this time. So that's done, but I would like to see the facilities committee and the recreation commission get together.
Yes.
And I'd like to see the agent committee and the facilities committee get together. We want something in writing, so we have something. So Mary has a piece of paper that says, Andy Russo will not be the cook at, you know, so- something. Okay, it's seven o'clock now, I'm gonna call the board of selectmen to order. Can you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Get up here. Oh. Oh, man.
Do you wanna have that charge as a legitimate item?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Item three, public comment, three-minute maximum per person. But anybody from the public, I knew it would be Mr. Luci. Come right up, big damn evening.
Uh, I have a couple of things to ask. First of all, I'd like to know the duties of the board of selectmen.
And what regard?
Brief.
In what regard?
Legislative part.
You're talking about violations?
Correct.
If we can't solve them, we have to send them to our legal counsel. And the matter, your matter, for instance, has been there for several months.
Years, dude.
I'm actually meeting with Saint Arch tomorrow.
Okay.
So it is on my agenda, yes, so I'm meeting with Saint Arch tomorrow.
We can't, as a board, throw people out of the third floor, even though they're illegally-
I understand, I understand that. But there's been a fence that's illegal, the thirty-four apartment is illegal.
I told Bill to take him to court.
The garage is illegal, well, just so you have a little heads up, you put another building up.
I saw it. I went by there Friday, saw it Friday.
And Chad said he doesn't need a permit, which is fine, he goes, there is a setback violation, it's supposed to be five feet.
Five feet, he's one and a half. I know, I know exactly what you're saying. I talked to the building official today. He, he's, he's beside himself, and, and I just want, don't get violent, because we don't wanna see our building official arrested.
Not getting violent, but I, I mean, does this guy have something over somebody, or something? 'Cause I'm really having a hard time understanding this. It's years, not months, not weeks, years.
I, I don't know what the court can do. Can, can the court throw these people out? I don't know.
But, but, but there's, but there's zoning rules and fines and regulations that haven't been enforced. They told you, last time I was here, about seventy-five hundred dollars, probably closer to ten grand now. I don't know, how come that's not, that's not taking place? It's a twenty-five dollar a day fine, it's been two years. Figure it out. It's right around ten grand. You know, maybe, maybe I'm not saying right. Do I need to say please? Do I have to say, please do something? Please help me out? We, sir, we are trying to. This thing takes time. Recently, we've just, within a year, turned over our, our building official. I understand that. It's with the lawyer. The lawyer is doing the due. I don't think he gets it. Well, I can't speak to Bill Saint Arch's caseload work. I'm sorry. I work for the mayor with it. Then, then, give me some advice. Should I talk to you beside the board of selectmen?
Vinnie from Providence?
I don't know what to tell you, I'm kidding. You get an obstinate person like obviously this person is.
And I think, and you say, what does he have? I think what it is, is he knows that because we are bound by certain legal processes, he knows that it's gonna take time, and he gets away with what he can, as long as he can.
If this was going on next to you, or you, or you, it wouldn't happen. It would've been done a long time ago. You know? Actually, you know what, sir? I resent the hell out of that. Now you, now you just get, now you ju- I understand you, I understand your man. I'm telling you the truth. Uh, I, no you're not.
I think I am.
No you're not. I won't speak for these, my esteemed colleagues, I'll speak for me, pal. See, my name is Mr. Luci, it's not pals.
Did you get a letter from the building official?
I got copies of, um, information from the building official today, yes, and he discussed with me, um, your, um, the most recent developments, and I, I was already slated to meet with Bill Saint Arch tomorrow, and it's, it's on the agenda for us to discuss tomorrow, so I can find out what our next steps are.
I have talked to Bill and asked him to proceed with the finding process. I, I didn't know if he, I don't know if he's being fined. We don't get a report that the court is fine him money per day. I don't know that.
Well, I wish somebody would just tell me something.
Well, Mary will tell you something by Wednesday after she has this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else? Delphine, do you have your hand up?
No.
I just saw it.
No, just scratch.
Legal scratch, very good. Scene none. Item four, approval of minutes, April seventeenth, two thousand seventeen.
I'm gonna approve this man.
Motion day and second to approve that submitted. Any discussion? Any admissions, deletions? All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Eyes happy? Petitions and communications. Mary, do you have a communication you wanted to share?
I was actually just gonna take care of it when we get down to, um, Cargill Falls.
Okay.
And we'll follow that up.
Uh, on communication, uh, I, out of the blue, we all, on this board, received an email from Leanne Parker, Roy's best friend.
I didn't, I didn't even see it.
Roy's best friend now. With his warmest, warm regards. Thank you very much. Right now, it's, it's good that she came. Okay, we'll have to make a decision as we come down a little bit, if she wants something.
And if anybody wants to, she had sent a large, um, board that has, um, no, that has the layout of the proposed layout of the, of the, um, complex. I have it in my office. It's a, it's a very large board, it's
I had asked her about what, what, I don't know what you're doing. What's it gonna look like? And she did send it to, to Mary.
Yeah.
Get that to the library or to a place that don't be seen?
Sure, we can get it out. I just-
'Cause she also, well, I'll wait till we get it.
All right, Judge?
I understand we haven't crossed the finish line on this.
No, oh, no.
I can tell you, I am heartened by what we're seeing.
Yeah.
Really. This is the first time that I actually am starting to think that I can feel comfortable about it, because of what she's providing.
We have to go down a little bit?
Yeah, I don't wanna talk too much.
She wants something. Tell it later. Okay. Uh, report on special, oh, excuse me. Standing committees, general government, not a reporting month?
June, Mary?
Um, June, yes.
Okay, so we'll schedule a meeting in June.
Okay. Charter revision, that's coming up later. There's no report. Special service district, not a reporting month. Facilities group, executive session, negotiation of sale of property, that's going in executive session in fourteen A. Staff reports, economic development, not a reporting month. Building official, fire marshal, not a reporting month. Okay, now we come to Mary.
I'm the only one that has your report. What the heck?
You get the big dollars, that's what we wanna hear from you.
So you got my report.
Anybody have questions for Mary on the report? Alma just grunted, no? Okay, thanks, Mary, for that report. Unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business that hasn't been taken care of? Harvey?
On the car, yeah, we're gonna do the Cargill Falls. This is where we, I wanna be able to insert the request.
At this point, yeah.
At this point.
Go, Mary.
So, um, also at the end of today, everyone received an email from Leanne. Um, she, as part of one of her emails before, had requested a potential adjustment or, um, change to the back field gate, um, around the installation of the gate boom, the boom installation. Um, she was originally looking for it to be like tomorrow, but it's not, they're not ready for it anyway, and she doesn't wanna push, so she was looking at Thursday or Friday. However, she's still trying to get in touch with the Kellys, 'cause she wants to make sure that they fully understand and have been at, have been able to look at the whole plan before that starts underway. She wants to, you know, communicate with them. So she still will eventually need to have the gate adjusted for them to be able to do that installation. So that's her request, is to be able to do that. Um, she's requesting for Thursday or Friday. However, my concern is that what if she doesn't get ahold of the Kellys until Thursday or Friday, and then she's really looking for Monday or Tuesday? So, um, I would like to be able to, you know, if you guys make a motion on this, for it to be, um, a motion with a flexible date based on the date that they're ready to do the installation, rather than just Thursday or Friday, because if it happens to be Monday or Tuesday, then I have to, we have to wait again for the next elections meeting. And I don't wanna undo, you know, make her wait unduly as well, so.
Mary, I mean, on that same point, I thought there was specific times of the year when the boom was going in, and I don't recall spring. I recall the fall, and then they would take it out.
She, she did ask for both.
She did ask for both.
One in the spring and one in the fall.
One in spring and one in fall, right.
That's all right, though.
So the gate adjustment boom is a fancy word for the trash boom? No, no. The gate adjustment boom is the apparatus that puts the gate up and down. So she's not looking to put the trash boom?
Y- yes.
So my understanding is, no, the, the- So my understanding is no, the gate adjustment relates to the installation of the boom, the trash boom, yes. So the baskeel gate is the adjustment, the boom is related to the trash boom, yes.
So we, she lets us for us to lower the?
Baskeel gate, so they can install the boom in, right.
Will that come up later?
No, that's what, that's.
Oh, I see the slash, okay.
Right, that's the.
Gate adjustment slash, and I also want to install the catch.
Right, right, right. And that's for the boom adjustment. So if you were to decide to want to make a motion to allow for that baskeel gate adjustment that we would make in order for them to install that, I would just ask for flexibility on, so we can choose the date that actually corresponds with it.
Would any selectman like to make that motion?
I make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion made by Roy, second by Alma, to give the flexibility to the town administrator to work with Leanne on lowering the baskeel gate so they can put the boom in. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do you have all that, Denise?
Nice.
I have a question.
Yeah, that we're going to discussion right now. Doug?
Is there any way that we can be informed as to when that would happen?
Yes, so.
Any way if any of us get phone calls, hey, what's going on? Why is the river down or whatever? Oh, I have no idea.
Well, if Mary has the flexibility, she'll send an email to everybody.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay? Any other questions?
I'd also like to see this gauge.
We're not there yet.
No, she said it is. It's supposed to be very visible.
I saw it.
Well, no, she said it might not be visible right now because the water is at the highest level. It will be all here right now.
Okay, let's vote on this motion. All those in favor of Roy's motion, signal, obviously, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Are there any abstentions? Eyes have it. Mary, you have the flexibility. Call tomorrow and tell her what the deal is.
Thank you.
All right, next. Pending claims litigation, sale of property, that goes fourteen B. Grant considerations. We have an anti arson grant application for GoPro cameras for the fire department, I believe.
For fire marshals.
Fire marshal. Four hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Eighty-seven thousand.
Eighty-seven, and it's totally reversible by the state of the.
By the grant. It's a grant.
Grant.
So you make me that motion?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Alice, second by Renee, to approve this grant. All those in favor? Anybody opposed? There you go, Norm, you can fill them. Okay, new business, bid award, Catch Basin Cleaning.
TruX, I got TruX.
Just what, two bids, Denise?
Yes.
Two bids, one is TruX and what's the other one? All of you guys are open right now. I know. Sometime before Easter, let's go.
We got time.
We don't have time.
All night.
Oh, we don't. Maybe we get this story on by Thursday.
I got TruX.
You want to go first, huh?
I'll be lower than you in the head.
All right, I got from Triton, Stormwater, Putnam, Connecticut. Catch Basin bid price eighteen dollars and fifty cents per Catch Basin slash Vanhold. Post schedule starts seven seventeen and eight seventeen.
Not bad, Owen. You beat it?
What do you have, Owen?
Bid per basin fifteen nineteen.
Fifteen nineteen by TruX. So you have two bids, one at fifteen nineteen for Catch Basin, one at eighteen dollars. What's your pleasure?
I move we approve TruX pending review of our jury.
Motion made, second to take the TruX bid pending jury's recommendation or review. Questions? All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Eyes have it, so we're. Construction, equipment rental. We have bids for that, Denise?
Yes.
Here they come. How many? Two?
Three.
Three.
I'll take SAS.
Be the S.
You want one out?
No, 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 Denise. We have them all done, we'll check them out. We're waiting for Renee.
Mm-hmm, I got it.
Thanks for that response today, Mrs. Renee. That really grew.
Thank you.
Part of the deal, I guess. Okay, Scott, you're first. What do you have?
Okay, well, we got a big breakdown. Do you want me to read each individual one?
I have no idea what this kind of equipment is.
Runal of a Cat D six bulldozer, a dollar fifty, a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. Komatsu D thirty-one E bulldozer, one oh five per hour. Volvo grader, one thirty per hour. A Hubbard grader, ninety-five per hour. Cat skid steer loader, ninety-five per hour. With a grinder, one forty per hour. With a landscape brake, one forty per hour. Michigan, four and a half yard loader, one eighty-five per hour. Volvo, LB seventy backhoe loader, one oh five per hour. Acroment excavator, one eighty-five per hour. A Volvo EC one sixty B excavator, one sixty per hour. We put a hammer on it, it's going to go up to two thirty-five an hour. Volvo EC fifty-five mini excavator, one twenty. We put a hammer on it, one fifty-five. A rubber tire paver, two hundred and fifty dollars, two hundred and fifty dollars an hour. A ten-ton vibratory roller, a DD seventy, one twenty per hour. A five-ton vibratory roller, a DD thirty-eight, ninety an hour. Tractor with low bed trailer, fifty ton, is a hundred and fifty dollars per hour plus permits. Eighteen cubic yard triaxle dump, twenty-five ton, is ninety dollars an hour. A three-yard dump truck, seventy-five per hour. And a laborer, sixty-five an hour. Note, additional eighteen dollar per hour overtime rate will apply for the hours between six PM and eight AM. Six, well, if you go six PM and six AM, I'm sorry. You are right, thank you.
You got more?
And that is it.
I provide a total?
Well, no, because we, 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 you know, Jerry says I need an excavator for this job or I need a roller for that.
Go ahead, Renee.
This one is from Heimcroft Paving and Landscape LLC in Woodstock. No charge for transport, daily and equipment rates include operators, standard eight-hour working time assumes standard wage rate. We have a sheet of equipment hourly rates. JCB backhoe with hydraulic thumb, ninety-five an hour. Skid steer with, in parentheses, bucket, side dump bucket, grapple bucket or broom. With grinder is ninety an hour, with grinder is one twenty an hour. Curbing for anything less than a hundred linear feet, minimum charge of five hundred per location. Otherwise, five dollars per linear foot. Cat three oh five mini excavator with hydraulic thumb, ninety an hour. Cat three eleven excavator, one sixty-five an hour. Huber grader, eighty-five an hour. Blast creep grader, ninety an hour. JD eighty-four thirty articulated tractor with twelve-inch blade, a hundred an hour. One-ton dump truck, eighty-five an hour. Eighteen or twenty-five yard dump trucks, twenty-four ton capacity, ninety an hour. Dump truck and, dump trailer and truck, ninety-five an hour. Low batter tilt deck trailer and truck, a hundred an hour plus permit. Wyler P three eighty-five paver, one ninety-five an hour. Lee Boy eighty-five hundred paver, one eighty-five an hour. JD six forty-four loader, two and a half yard, one thirty an hour. Twelve-ton roller, one eighty an hour. Five-to-seven ton roller, eighty an hour. Two-ton vibratory roller, seventy-five an hour. And one and a half ton static roller, sixty an hour. Street sweeper, one fifty an hour. Twenty-fourteen Husqvarna P seven sixty twenty-nine mower, eighty an hour. Two thousand seven JD seven fifty-seven mower, eighty an hour. JD six fifty tractor with yoke rake or turf vac, eighty an hour. Hand labor, fifty an hour.
Thank you, Renee.
Could I make a recommendation? Can we just send this to Jerry? Can I just make a motion? I make a motion, we send these to Jerry and let him figure out which ones, the better ones.
Better for the town? Is there a second motion?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Who's the third?
Who's the third?
Who's the third? The third one is.
Who's the better bidder?
Just the title of the company.
BMW paving and landscaping.
BMW, okay. So let Jerry do that. All right, thank you. Renee, are you ready to snuff now with all this equipment?
If you want a vibratory roller, I know who to go to.
Okay, about the T-Mobile lease extension. What is that, Mary?
Okay, so.
It's in the back.
It's in the back. There's an agenda item cover sheet. So T-Mobile, we have a, we, T-Mobile has a lease agreement with the town for their space on the cell tower. That expires in October of this current year. So they initially contacted us about two months ago with their first proposal. And you'll see a summary of the three proposals now. This is our third rendition of proposals. So they initially came to us with a proposal of two thousand dollars a month. No escalation at all, but a guaranteed rental period in which, say, if they canceled two months in, if they wanted to not continue with the lease, they were guaranteed for sixty months. I went back to them and said, really? No escalation? And two thousand dollars is too low. Our current amount that we're receiving right now is a little over twenty-seven hundred dollars a month. So I pushed it back to them and said, you need to refine your numbers. Proposal two came back with an escalation factor of three percent annually, which we, that's, we have five percent right now, but it's three percent annually, but no rental guarantee. They did increase the monthly rent to a little over twenty, almost twenty-six hundred dollars. So I pushed it back again because of the no rental guarantee and said, you need to give us still some assurances that you're going to have, we're going to have some rental guarantee. So the third proposal is the one that I have in, the full copy of it is the one that I have in the packet. The base rent, starting at twenty-five seventy-two a month, which is still, it is a slight decrease from where we're currently at. It's a three percent escalation annually. And there's a rental guarantee of forty-eight months. With this, if we decide to approve this, they are also looking for the amendment language, the sample amendment language that was also attached to be approved. It's amendment to the existing contract. So this basically is amending the rent and the terms to reflect the new rent, the new terms as far as the durations and the dates. I have sent this over to Saintege for review, the sample language. And I did put yes here that it is required because of the contract. He has not had, he just came back from vacation, thought he was going to be able to get it back to me, turn it around by today. Unfortunately, was unable to, so he's still reviewing the sample language. But I wanted to get this in front of you to determine if you wanted me to go back to Verizon again with any changes to their terms.
T-Mobile.
T-Mobile and Verizon, it's all the same. T-Mobile.
No, it isn't.
No, I know. I know. T-Mobile with any other changes to this lease extension because their lease, this offer is only valid for sixty days. So we would then have to restart the process again with them. So that was why I still kept it on the agenda, even though we didn't have a concrete response back from them.
Is this, look.
The heads up.
I like where we're at. I think Mary's done a good job getting us to these terms. I wouldn't want to push a whole lot more.
Well, for the different opinion, from the guy who likes to push. Well, my question is, is this a trend in the industry? Have you, have you heard anything from other town administrators saying that this is what they're going through?
Yeah, actually, the T-Mobile, Verizon, AT&T went through a stint about three years ago where they were going through and just canceling their leases completely because they felt that they could do it significantly cheaper in another avenue and with smaller antennas on electrical poles as opposed to doing it in this fashion. So they actually went through, there was a number of towns that they came through and said, drastically reduce our rent, otherwise we're pulling the plug. And they pulled the plug. Those that said, nope, we're not doing it.
It wasn't a bluff.
They just pulled the plug. I will say, that did happen in killingly. The one that pulled the plug, six months later, came back and was like, please let us get back on your pole. And they ended up kind of hooking back up, but we did have to go through that period of time. And there's no guarantee that they're going to decide, hey, I think, I want to come back on the pole.
So what's your recommendations to this board?
My recommendation was, I think that the, I think that this is actually a higher monthly lease amount than what I've seen on others that are renewing. So I was, I was satisfied, which is why I've been pushed back on the lease amount. I'm satisfied with the rental agreement and I'm satisfied with the escalator. But I will push back if this is, that's what the board chooses.
I think with a four-year guarantee, I think we ought to grab it because I'm of the opinion after these four years, the technology will probably have changed enough where they're not going to come back. So I'd rather not push them out the door sooner than later.
So you're making a motion?
I'd like to make the motion that we go with this third proposal.
All right, I've changed my mind, I'll second it after Roy's second.
And I will say, I just want to make sure that with the caveat that Bill is going to review and sign off on that language.
So the motion made, seconded, per Bill's review of language. All those in favor? Anybody opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Next. Property appraisals, Ointar and Murphy Park.
Okay, so this one, I wasn't sure the force or the cart went first, so it's landing in your lap first. In order for us to be able to move forward with the conversion and document to the state that Murphy Park is an acceptable alternative or replacement for the Ointar deed restriction, we have to have appraisals done on both properties. Ointar has boundary survey work that had already been done years ago that they can use for the appraisals. Murphy Park doesn't, or at least none that we're aware of. They've done some looking on that. So before the appraisals could happen, the boundary survey needs to be completed with Murphy Park. With that, our hope is that if we don't have to use all of Murphy Park for this deed restriction, we wouldn't. We would try and carve out the piece that we would need in order to map, to meet the value of the Ointar park. So J and D has submitted a cost to perform that surveying, that boundary surveying work of ten thousand eight hundred. No, I did not go out for an RFP on this. Timing of everything, I felt that we needed to move forward with somebody who was familiar with all of the projects and had been working, she's, J and D has been working on this conversion process as well. So that's why I did not do that. As far as the appraisals, I did contact three appraisal firms. I got those three appraisal firms from our successor. I contacted Angela and said, you know, where should I look for appraisals? It didn't meet the threshold of needing to go into an RFP dollar-wise. So I got responses from Flanagan and Flanagan Associates responded with a appraising, the cost for appraising both properties would be fifty-two hundred with a three-week turnaround time. RJ Mulready responded with a total price of thirty-eight hundred and a two-week completion time. And Platte Associates responded with a total price of thirty-two hundred and a two-week turnaround. So I, I was recommending Platte Associates as being the lowest and having the same turnaround time.
And they're in Platte.
They're in Platte, yeah.
And they're in Platte. Is there a motion on the floor?
Now, I will say, as far as funding this, you'll note in the financial summary, we don't have funding. So I have to go to, we have to go to the board of finance to request a fund balance appropriation. But I wanted to make sure first that this board was.
Pending approval?
Yep.
Okay, I'll make that motion pending approval from the board of finance.
Motion made by Doug, second by Alma. All those, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? No, okay. Accept the resignation of Nicholas Longwood for the facilities study.
I move to accept with regret.
Second.
Motion made to accept Nick Longwood's. Motion made to accept Nick Longwood's resignation with regret, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Uh, charter revision, final recommendation to the Charter Revision Commission. This board has to vote to give the charter revision recommendation to Owen, so you can bring it back to his commission.
Well, I think Mary did a great job summarizing all the, uh, items that we talked about. And in interest of saving time, I move that we recommend all the proposed changes on this three-page sheet to the Charter Revision Commission.
Second. Motion made by Scott, seconded by Roy, uh, Roy Stevens, to accept all of recommendations presented by Mary in her beautifully professional summary. Discussion?
It is good.
I wanna have the discussion.
I like the presentation.
Yeah, um, the only thing is for, um, on the five member, that is gonna go back to a four, not a three. Four, we're going back to where it was.
Where it was in the original chart, right.
That's what I pulled from the original, original charter.
Well, we're just voting to send it to the committee.
Well, you gotta have the right numbers.
Right. So your, your big, your change Owen is the maximum from one party on five, on Mary's sheet it's three, and you're saying it should be four?
Yeah, I, I don't, obviously, we don't have the charter in front of us, but I think Mary's.
Yes, we do.
If you go down to the first.
I gotta write it down.
Oh, you do?
So if you go down to the bottom part was the suggest, the bottom part is what the.
All the way down the bottom.
Yeah, all the way down to the bottom.
Oh, you're a tricky Mary.
So the top one, okay. So the top one, it should be what you had in your proposed contra- uh, charter revision. So the bottom part of that page should reflect current charter language.
That right-hand column.
Yeah, that right-hand column with the bottom two, you know, first category, second category, because five is actually broken into two categories in the current charter, correct?
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
Seven, seven is supposed to be five.
Seven is supposed to be five?
Yep.
Okay. I'll fix that.
Do we have a seven member?
Right here.
No, we're in the sixth, not the seventh. We're in the second, so.
No.
I don't know, maybe it's a, I don't know, we are not, we are not.
I'll fix that.
Okay. Any other thing that's.
So there's a few things that Mary recommended that dated, and I don't know, I don't have time to do this stuff.
We gotta bring it back to committee to check out.
No, we gotta make sure this is what I'm telling them. Cause you gotta vote on it, it's not right there, I can't go there.
So the, the revisions that I have in here are in, um, the duties of the mayor, adding in Alma's recommendation for adding in, or his agent, in order for, um, department heads to be reporting to the town administrator, as well as removing the language, um, surrounding the, um, mayor, uh, creating a separate annual report and instead we'll do that within the, um, confines of the
Audit.
audit process. The second one was under the departmental estimates with related, relation to the budget. And, um, the department's changing theirs from the first, um, Wednesday in March to the first Wednesday in February. So that way they would have the department budget numbers into the mayor before his, um, his are due to the Board of Selectmen. Um, and then in the next, the next one that I have is the duties of the mayor on the budget. And that was, um, still keeping it with the fourth Wednesday in February, and there was discussion at that meeting as to whether or not, and I didn't make a specific recommendation whether it should be the fourth Wednesday or move it into maybe the first or second, you know, week of March, and still leave the Board of Finance to get theirs, it's just, um, a debate on that. But, um, removing, in that sentence, it was removing the language the, that the mayor would present to the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance, because the mayor really only presents to the Board of Selectmen, not the Board of Finance. Um, and then the recommendations surrounding, um, the expenditures and accounting. And having the, um, or their agents submit in, inserted in one section, so that way the, um, Board of Selectmen could, could, um, of, assign the finance director and the town administrator, or a combination of us, to, um, be the ones that audit and review the invoices and get the payments, so we can keep that payment process going, and then we could submit whatever level of reporting to the board, um, in that process, if that's what the board so chose to do. But at least the charter would allow for that.
What is your opinion, Mary?
I just pulled up the original charter, and the seven-member board had five members.
I don't know what you said.
Type of, yeah.
Can you just say?
It's entirely possible.
Did you call up and say, we're green shirt now, or am I green shirt? I thought so.
I don't know, it's just.
And then including, uh, scuns.
We're gonna read the third Wednesday?
Fourth Wednesday, May twenty-fourth.
We wanna read the third Wednesday. Can we do that?
Third Wednesday, what, the nineteenth?
Yeah. We can read anywhere.
The third Wednesday is the seventeenth. Not only is it equal, it's one.
Where do you normally meet all right up here?
Yeah, he, 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 he's, he's, he's the third Wednesday.
No, we're meeting the fourth Wednesday every month.
Yeah, this is what I, I mean, I had three members phone, so they can't make it on.
Yeah, we can't meet. We can't meet up here.
How about downstairs?
I think downstairs.
You're superintendent conference room.
So it'd be the third Wednesday.
Seventeen.
Yeah.
What motion?
Well, Owen's here pecking around.
Fine, it's for the right day.
Come on Owen.
It's for the right day.
Alright, there's a motion on the floor to accept the charter revision submitted by our town administrator.
I have another question.
Oh, my, Aiken.
This is on the town administrator, I don't know. Remember Doug, I showed you this last week, and then after, right at the end of the, uh, hearing we had, Bill Saint Os came over to me and told me that we couldn't put this at the end to carry out responsibility in accordance with approval of the town of Putnam job description. Because during this term of this, this charter, a job description could change. And that would change the whole thing.
But what could we have in there for wording?
He said, he said, this is where it's going to stop. Town administrator said we directly respond it to the entire Board of Selectmen. And directs revision of the name.
Okay.
There you go.
We just took out the last sentence.
Yeah.
Are you all set now?
I don't know.
What, what page is that on earlier?
Oh, I got eleven on this one, I don't know which one it is. Section two.
It's added language, right?
No, it's been on here for a while.
No, you own it, Anne.
But it's not in the current charter.
No, 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 I don't know.
So.
Page eleven on the, the one, uh, three eight seven two.
Yep.
Page eleven down on the bottom.
Just get rid of, um, the, about the job description.
You could show it after the meeting, all.
Very often, yeah.
Yeah, I can go over it with you.
Yeah.
Okay, motions on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Aye.
Here, Doug's opposed, okay. Any abstentions? Ayes, have and so voted. Okay, moving on. Approval of the bills, Owen.
Make the motion, we pay all approval.
Second.
Okay, motion made, seconded, pay all approval of bills.
I already signed them. You, you guys haven't signed them yet.
Yeah, he did.
All those in favor, pay the bills, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Are there any bills that we should be aware of that are kind of sketchy? No, very nice. Sketchy. Okay, announcements. Uh, yes, I have some announcements. Um, I think the May third, we're gonna have a visitor from Huffington Post who works with the Connecticut Tourism. Uh, she's a Connecticut state worker, she's coming to visit Putnam, and she's outlined where she's gonna go. She's gonna start at Victoria Station, we're marrying our leader there for coffee, hope she bucks up. And then we're going to various other places, and then she's gonna stay here the whole afternoon and evening. So just to make you aware, when you see someone walking around town, you know who it is. It's, it's good, good P R, taking the first selectmen of Brooklyn out to lunch, today, Owen. Good relations.
With the Huffington Post lady?
No, no, no.
Totally different thing.
Not on the town's dime, on my dime.
You're gonna take Fran too?
Huh? She could report that. So those are the only two announcements I have.
First Friday?
First Friday is this, this is.
This week?
This Friday.
And the theme is, uh, cinema. The fellow who won the contest, I sent him a very nice letter from the town congratulating him on winning the contest, what beautiful job he did artistically. Uh, Sue Allard had her annual appreciation dinner for her after-school program. Uh, cafeteria ladies at Putnam P E S did a great job. Fantastic menu, I thanked both of them, letters to both. And she didn't want to invite Scott because they're tight.
Chicken par.
Chicken par is great, but on a tight budget. So those are the only announcements I have. You got one?
Yeah, ribbon, thank you.
And there's a V O ribbon cutting at five thirty at yoga, some yoga place that I should be involved in.
Two yoga places.
Two yoga places.
Actually combined, seventy-five mains.
Very nice.
They're separate businesses.
Where's seventy-five mains?
It's where the Silver Circle Studios is.
Oh, perfect.
Right next door.
Cause I got, I got reservations, right?
Exactly.
Of course, very nice.
And beautification day is this Saturday. For anyone who would like to help clean up their town.
I would, but I have a condition.
My daughter's graduating, I'm sorry.
No, excuse me, I don't know.
That's true.
Scott's big toe needs to be cut off. I hope you have a, successful as it's been in the past, and I hope the Bulletin gives us the same coverage they gave Brooklyn. Eight pages, pictures.
Joe Gosey.
Oh, yeah.
Rick Ives.
You thought we missed that? We had that covered. Something you haven't, and, oh, another announcement, Channel Three, W F S V Channel Three of Hartford was here Friday, unbeknownst to me or anybody else on this board, and they awarded, uh, the diaper bank, I think a thousand dollars. And I got a phone call from Stratford, Connecticut, my, one of my relatives. Tony, your town's on television. I go, you're dreaming. He's putting T, I said, we don't have TVs in the mayor's office. So I called home, I had my daughter put it on, sure enough, Scott Haney was there, and a whole bunch of little kids, the twenty towns and twenty days thing. So.
And you weren't noticing?
I, I don't know, no one knows. I asked Elfa, I thought she was pulling the wall in line, she didn't know either.
No, I was escorting somebody from Newtown, um, up here, and I heard it at the crossings at quarter o'clock.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I went down there anyhow, I, you know, found a park space, by the time I walked over there, they were packing up the stuff and going home. But I thought it would've been proper and nice if the mayor would've been welcoming the guy, shook his hand, and then left. I don't want any publicity with that, would've been a proper protocol. But anyhow, I guess, so you can all think that way. Public comment, three minutes. Mr. Luci. Any more? Oh, it'd be nice. Yes, Mr. Val LaGrasse.
I appreciate you being nice.
Just a, just a question back to what, something Mary was talking about with the, uh, the survey and the, also the appraisal for Murphy Park. You mentioned going back to the Board of Finance, is that for both, or just?
It'll be for everything. The survey.
For both the survey and?
Yes, there'll be one request, the survey and the appraisals.
Okay. Um, just second comment, unless I misread the, uh, charter revision, is there anything in there? I see a lot of committees and whatever in there, is there any, any provision there for the, uh, facilities committee to be a standing committee?
No.
I believe so.
We can't.
No.
I, I think that was the understanding when, when, uh, Bill Saint On to the resolution, that that committee would be a standing committee.
It never came up even in the study commission, that was never on the list of things we looked at two years ago.
Let's see, that's something that came, I think, maybe after or was overlooked, because as you can see, it'll be something, and there's other, other things beyond what we're working on now, but were handed to us that we have to put on the back burner until after this, this whole project is staying. So there's more than, more than, uh, just these building projects. Some disposal of common property, also what to do with this building, and if we end the library, whatever happens on the referendum, there are other things.
We had three hearings, and now nobody, I don't think that was ever mentioned.
Well, my apologies for not being there, but I think that, uh, that's I, it's gonna be long after I'm gone, but it's, it's, it's something I think the town should have going forward.
Something to look, to look at, maybe we can talk to Bill, maybe we can, it doesn't have to be the charter, but we can put it as a standing committee. Uh, Gloria Marion, I'm glad you're here. You're on the, uh, Service District Councilor, right?
Yeah.
Correct. Why does the Special Service District have their meetings on the same day that we have Board of Selectmen meeting? Because I am a member of the Service District and I can't go to those if we're having to run these dates. Is that?
For the, for the budget meeting.
It's the way it's always been set.
Just the, as Duff has in office, that's the way we always did it, with the arrow through.
Isn't it in the charter that way?
It is. And, and we vote on those same dates every year, we just voted on the new calendar. Just like you do for your. How dumb is that? Well, you can't disagree.
I don't know about that.
Well, it's, you kind of like denying me the right to voice my opinion at those meetings, I can't. You know, after the fact I can, then, you know, say her crybaby, but I would always think that someone in the district should have you, have the, uh, privilege of going and expressing themselves.
I'll look into it, who can change that?
We may have a problem with changing it.
I hope you do.
Did the budget, did the budget pass?
It did. Unanimous.
Unanimous.
Thank God for the firefighters. It's lower than last year, right? Yes. Good. Okay, Gloria, see, you brought some good news. Okay, uh, we have no more public comment, and we have to go to a possible executive session.
Make a motion, we recess the Board of Selectmen.
We don't, I, we don't have, we don't have any executive certain.
You're making a motion to adjourn then?
Yes.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
That is nice of her to do that.